Not messing around.
Um, have you ever known me to go?
I don't know.
My house.
That's what they said.
You came in, they got time for time with that class.
That's what you're doing that.
I'm ready, sorry.
I know it's okay.
But it's um, you know, I'm trying to get free uh.
Or at least the extension.
I feel like. Oh, hey. I know, did you keep so much so far away?
I know.
I'm fine because they're gonna be filming you guys and I'm gonna be eating.
Okay.
How about it?
All right, are we all ready? Ready to get going here?
Please.
Hey, let's start off with our working agreements. Um, we embrace conflict and seek to resolve positively and respectfully. We address topics at times. We value diversity and invite multiple points of view to maximize the mission. We respect others' views and cloud through active communication and participation. Okay. Do we need to do a roll call or do you just record that? I don't know, I don't have it on here, but I assume it's always. I, we don't even have the recorder here. Oh, okay, I'll grab it. Okay, we'll wait, we'll pause it. I'm so sorry. Oh, no, you're good.
Listen.
The people that's on line, there are lots of people live. And then. Oh, so it's not speaking, it's not speaking. No, it didn't. I'm not being intelligent. Webinar. Okay. You can't grab one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, cuz there's no sound there.
No, it does sound.
Yeah. You say she actually over there.
He'll be up at one of my schools next week. Two days. By just the notion is all the thing I would. Right. Very nice done here.
It's a big bag. We didn't get very far. Walking. They're back to P G H R.
Yeah.
You know, we have food, so I went to the well and they got their Bodie bowl, but I'll leave this. That's all.
And I guess the only thing to note is that Gus is not here. Um, he's gonna join us. It's possible and may even. Right. That that brings us to the family resolution. Yes, um, Suzie's gonna be able to speak about the resolution there.
Yeah, so we talked about this, gosh, I think it was September, October. Or August, I don't know. Um, and this is just the resolution that we need to with to not participate in the F A M L I. Which we'd already kind of discussed that nobody, none of the other school districts, they're really doing it. That's just the protocol to move forward with that.
There any questions?
No, I think it's really just so everybody's clear that it's not that we're taking anything away from our staff. By voting for this, we were actually then having our own and not um, having them put into this, which could be something they don't get to choose.
Or not voted on.
The opportunity to opt into it if they choose to.
Or not voted on it, because we're the work session.
Right. So, yeah, so there's no questions or anything. Okay, excellent. I do have a question. Does the board have any like desire, what the communication with staff on the back look like after the reds, resolutions approved? Or after, we we're just gonna put out a statement, but if you want something specific from the board's side.
I would trust our newly hired P R person to help with that.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be working through Suzie and. Other thing I just noticed that approved and adopted this 21st day of November will change that for the meeting date is 14. Now, as far as I know, I mean, the city adopted it. I don't know that anyone has.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know why you would. Yes, it's Halloween. Little H. I'm trying to change that. Yeah. Okay, um, all right, you've passed um, BOSI's board seats.
So I had text Kristy Marie. Um, so we do not get to in their bylaws disappoint someone. Um, it does need to be someone that is a sitting board member in manitude to be that member.
Thanks, and you're willing to give it a shot?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll have um. Their administrative assistant add you to that.
And is that something we need to vote on or is that we can just have this conversation? In previous one times it was voted on in public meetings. Okay. You wanna bring that up?
Had that they did that.
Okay, here we go. We have our monitoring reports. Um, so we did include the template that um, Karen provided us with last time. And I don't know if that's helpful for all of you, but I I like it as a document that we can use. I don't know that we need to go line by line through it, but I think it's great in terms of us. Assessing and evaluating.
I think it more clearly articulates our evidence and our thinking.
So you all want us to continue to attach this to these monitoring reports? Because this is part of the thing.
That'd be great.
I totally agree. I think it's helpful to kind of help us stay organized. We might not get into each and every question in detail, but it's a is a kind of some guidepost, if you will.
Um, do you have anything to add in the conversation?
No.
Okay, so let's start with um. Okay, so that's treatment of students, parents, public and community. So I think the biggest thing um, is that, you know, so this is Elizabeth's interpretation of this. If there is additional items, we'd like her to consider in the next report. That's probably gonna be the most beneficial. Um, I know, Jack, you had mentioned the idea, the um, the use of the language with no exceptions felt um.
Impossible, somewhat absolute.
Yeah.
Just because I mean, since obviously we're looking at the stuff, I mean, that's kind of our job is but getting carefully and. We're all accountable for this board. Um, so I just thought, I mean, I think that's great to have that as a goal, but you know, it's it's always good to aim high by understanding that. If if that's our standard, then we're not gonna be able to, or I wouldn't be able to vote to accept it because it's not accurate.
Well, it's still saying, even if we were to eliminate those last three words, it would still say that we are in compliance.
Correct, exactly.
And is this a binary deal where like we're in compliance, we're out of compliance, right?
You either vote to accept the monitoring report or not. And just a little background, when I first. 2019, there there wasn't this document, so uh, the board at the time sort of tasked me with coming up with this this process. And so this is from District 20. So but this is just what we've been, it has, as it was interpreted about three years ago. So I think it is wise in in the future to reevaluate the interpretation of it. But that's that's the source of where this, this text came from. Um, so I guess the first easy one, are we okay removing with no exceptions? Document when we approve it, when we bring it forward next time.
I'd recommend that.
I'm gonna I with that. Okay, I'm gonna work on uh, track changes now, so, okay. Um, okay, let's see. So, okay, then it goes to our interpretation. Um, so Elizabeth includes how she interprets. Her way of monitoring this. Either this this executive limitation. And so do you feel comfortable with her interpretation of this or um, do you feel like there's something missing?
I think the interpretation is good. I I put a note next to that on the in the second paragraph for just how how is that? Uh, where it starts in short, compliance is the clear uh, consistent by respect, courtesy, equity, meaningful time information, all exchanges. As hallmarks of district life, how is that measured? Because I couldn't tell on the evidence of compliance that there was any way, and and it may not be able to be measured. I'm just, but if we put it in there, we probably should be able to say that we're in compliance or not in compliance and have some evidence for why that's the case. And I don't know how that would happen because that's it's a big broad. Goal. And was it supposed to be rhetorical question, by the way?
No, I know. I'm just trying to, I was just trying to um, so, yeah, so I don't know, Tina, Christine Marie, do you have any?
I'm still just scanning a little bit.
Because it's true, I mean, I feel like some of those are kind of ambiguous. And then the evidence, of course, is based on um, maybe more of the the basic like unsafe, untimely. You know, unnecessary, like the things that are a little more.
Yeah.
Quantifiable.
Yeah, these are the things we do to make, ensure that we uh, move forward with the treatment of students, parents, public and community. So uh, they are typically just, here's what we do. It's not to the degree or to the measured outcomes of that, so.
But there certainly are a lot of things on the list. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah, we have a great team that does a lot of great work for kids and staff and families all the time. So I think that's where I really wanna make sure is highlighted the amount of thought and intentionality that goes into each one of these steps. Because really with always at the forefront is the um, the safety and treatment of our students, parents and the public. So I don't know if um, you all, if, I think it's good, but the document that we're looking at is in four docs. It's E L one point one. I think if anyone wants to add any content here that. This works with one one. Yeah, and thanks, Scott. She's gonna push.
I mean, cuz I think that if. I mean, if you wanna take out language that maybe feels. Something that that would be difficult to demonstrate. And I don't know if that would be um, things like, again, that piece of respect, courtesy. Um, I think we can demonstrate equity to a certain degree. Um, you know, we could say something like, as with all staff, we require a level of professionalism that includes these qualities. I mean, I don't know if that makes any sense in this moment, but.
And the number one, the interpretation.
Mm-hmm. I'm just thinking of Jack's point of like things that are in here that are difficult to demonstrate in the document.
I mean, in in my opinion, I think this is a dialogue for like a broader work session. Um, just in fact, like just thinking about what does that mean? There's a lot of, a lot of words here, and I agree. Um. Change to change that. Is that what you're hoping to do maybe for the initial review of the next board meeting or?
I think what I hear Jack saying, if I can just, that you're looking for outcomes kind of in measures. Whereas this is processed. These are all the inputs, if it was a logic model and the things that are happening and the things that are being done. You're asking perhaps, stop me if I'm wrong, kind of that outputs or the impact of all of these maybe that's a process, yes.
Nicely stated. I would totally agree. I've always been an outcome sort of person.
Could you um, could you provide an example just so that, so if it said um.
Well, just that sentence, how do we, how are we measuring the after the in short part? Because there's, there is a a long list of great things that the district is uh, is doing. There's no, no doubt about it. Um, but but the outcomes of all the stuff that's being done, how do we measure that to show? Because like from a medical standpoint, if you're gonna do a procedure, you're gonna know the outcome's successful. So you can compare surgery versus not surgery or whatever the use might be. But but you have to look for what's the outcome of all the work that's being done. So the process part now, we we do the culture survey once a year, which is probably plenty often enough. It'd be nice to get more um. You know, more responses to that. I mean, that might be one way that these things were included as part of that. And I think they may already be, and I just can't recall off the top of my head. But but some we'd actually measure because in this case, the students, parents, public and community are the end users of people. If that makes sense.
Right, so I'm just looking at like um, presented policies for review for A's. They pretend as discrimination, harassment and equal educational opportunities. And then you would want something that said which resulted in. More claims, fewer claims, better, like some outcome as a result of that, like is that?
It'd be hard to grade each one individually because then we would.
I mean, that's kind of like.
We have a nine hour work session. I was looking at.
Decide what are the outcomes or measures that we wanted? And then Elizabeth and her team would decide what are the inputs and processes to get those outcomes much like when we get the data. So think back to the data that we get for academics and attendance and um, some of that. There could be a document like that and then some of the process. Is because again, we don't probably need to know every process. We need to as a board monitor outcomes.
Okay.
And some of those outcomes are that, you know, if if uh, there's a 911 call, kids make it to the hospital and we have processes in place, right? Um, in this particular moment, um, do we have effective staff that greet children in a warm, welcome way? Um, so there are a lot of things that you can't measure that are captured. This is really, when you come back to V D D A and our governance policies, it's the things that we do to um, not have problems. If there's a better way for me to say that. So that's, that can be extremely hard to to capture and measure. And I would just ask for the board, if that's the direction you want these monitoring reports to go. I think we need to have a a bigger dialogue because there are.
I mean, it would be, it'd be, it would take something to do those outcomes and decide what are the outcomes that are evident that we would wanna see for each of the E L's.
So. And not to say we're like every other school district, but I say that oftentimes executive limitations are, here's what we're doing in in place to make sure that we, as much as possible in every single situation, are thinking about the best and the best interest of stuff. And this policy students, families and. I remember when the board came up with these interpretations years ago, it was multiple iterations of this, and so. Let's say, two things, the conversation.
Yeah, and I agree, we wouldn't want to leave out that qualitative piece. We just wanna make sure that that we get.
Yep.
Whatever, five or six things.
So. So just, I don't know, is that something that? You all want to determine tonight for the next board meeting or?
I think this would be, again, it's great for this situation when you look at. Yeah.
So often from the board perspective, when it comes to measures. It might be the question where Elizabeth personally say, what is the intended impact of these actions? And what might be some measures that we have available to us? What's some data that might? Be valuable and so almost a menu of measures in addition to the board's input.
And I would say that each time you hear like Jeannie Anderson presented last month on safety and security, she's presenting these results each month. And so I would ask you that if there's something specific around these measures that would be helpful, because that's where they're presenting. Specifics. And she talks about the increase within decrease in safe hotels, um, 911 calls potentially or and stewards. Uh, stewards work around all of the safety and security that we put in place. Whenever Kat talks about like um, screen cameras, security vestibles, all of those fall into these these categories. Also, I would say that um, those those board reports are a place where data can be found as well. And also through this school, school reports. But if you, you all wanna let us know, let me know what you wanna see in there, that'd be great.
So the question may be if that data is readily available and it's presented in a monitoring course. Colated and associated specifically with the E L's. That might be a way to think of it.
And a cross, cross reference.
Correct.
Sounds some more work to be done, but probably not between now and November 14th.
And I think a bigger comment, I'd love to see like an example of what y'all are. That'd be helpful. Thanks for that.
Any additional feedback before we move on to this one? Okay, right. That. Y L one point two, treatment of faculty and staff. Okay, so same thing with with no exceptions. Okay, so. With this one, it feels a little more black and white with policies, leadership practices, professional development and communication structures. Those are. Where areas we're looking at this section.
That's some of the works the board and our our team has done around the the A policies and the G policies really address some of those ambiguities that were there. So I think that's just one example of how we just continuously improve, make things better.
And then again, we're we're legally compliant.
I'm going to interpretation. So the the question on that, I think I mentioned this last time, um, the goal is certainly to be 100% compliant and. But to say that we require, because it just really is the board requiring of the superintendent, we require these things for 100% of the faculty and staff. Does that mean we're not compliant if the district is only 99%?
This is just like the systems and structures are aimed to uh, reach 100%. So that's what my interpretation is, that we're not gonna shoot to only include 90% of our employees in in fair treat, treatment. I equate it to like um, one of our strategic outcomes for students is that 100% of students will read at or beyond a grade level. I would never set a target at 90% of our students will read at or beyond grade level. We're gonna reach, our goal is to reach all. And then evidence of compliance as we move forward are the steps that we're doing. That doesn't mean that um, you know, in this reading situation that all students are currently reading at or above grade level. But that's what we're working towards. Those systems and processes, we're kind of constantly trying to focus.
But would require them be the correct word, because I think of a requirement as a requirement.
Can I, I'm not sure which.
That's right, then the first time I heard from agent, I think I mentioned that at my last meeting, ultimately.
Yeah.
Again, we just wanna make sure that what we're saying is is accurate so that we can accept the executive limitations monitoring or.
Sure.
That makes sense. So I'd have a goal to require, have a goal of courteous, respectful, dignified, equitable culture of the school district for 100% of the passing staff. I think that would take care of, I think a finding a place for require with goal. Otherwise, again, we would be able to pass this unless 100% of the staff uh, would agree with that statement.
I'm comfortable with that change.
Wait, can you say aim to? Aim towards the courteous. I like to do that, yeah. In towards. Any feedback on the the great work around the evidence of completion? I think that would be important for our team to hear.
Without a doubt, a lot of time and energy has been put in place as well as training um, and greater articulation of policy practice. Finding what that looks like anymore.
Thoughtful group of uh, staff we work with.
Yeah, it looks like we're definitely going back and doing some auditing and making sure that we're updated with our current practices.
I know Eric was working on this, or all the people that need to be CPR certified, because we're doing more medical things in the district potentially. Is everybody sort of by, that's supposed to be certified by?
We are, I mean, we're still continually scheduling, you know, classes for um, for folks who need one. Well, we actually just had a picture of another instructor coming on board that we're gonna start working on here to continue to do that. So um, yeah, I think I don't know if I could say right now 100% to that, but I know that we are definitely in process. Into that, but I'm super sure.
We just had our um, uh, we just had our N R C A N training for um, our administrative team. And uh, you know, the first response in that N R C A N is that you first, you know, attempt CPR. This, you constantly say like, who else might need to um, be trained in CPR? And so I just also, we also recently learned, and this is good feedback during that training, that our transportation department doesn't have an A E D at their their, oh, their new facility. And so what Eric is working on, um, getting that A E D planted there. So I just think um, through all of our trainings, we can just continue to improve them. But it's a big deal, because they don't wanna have to go to youth past to have a lifesaving device. So we'll be working on that. You know, yeah, so we're, they're moving along. Jimmy is our, right, Eric is our athletic trainer, is our CPR trainer.
We're glad Jimmy shared good things about him. And then did it says the, I'm the, I guess, the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth dot up on the second page, it talks about the climate survey. And it says we analyze that by school. I don't think we analyzed it by school. It's about confidentiality.
Which uh.
Six dots from the bottom on page two, oh, page three, I'm so sorry. Page three, I don't count very well.
Yeah, we we um.
Analyzed it by school? I don't think we did that, because there was questions about confidentiality or anonymity. We did that, so I'm pretty sure we did not do that.
No, we did. Um, they're presented in the board in that that we're right, the quantitative is around spy school. So like you, you can see it broken out that way.
You might just go back and check.
Yeah, I will do that.
Good.
See, let me read it. Hold on, I wanna read administrative. Please, I can, the way it's written, we're analyzed by each school. They absolutely were analyzed by all schools, all schools. And I'm looking at everyone, and even Jackie received hers from last year, so that.
All schools were included, but I don't think they were broken out by school.
The school, it's broken up, except they're individual ones.
Okay, so we didn't analyze it by school. We didn't see it by school, but just the administrative came to.
Yeah, and we're analyzed by each school, so they get it. Also departments receive it as well.
Okay, so it was broken out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost like you said, we we got our results working down by school and we're able to look at that data last year.
Okay.
It informs their action plans. Um, it informs our district action plan.
So, and I think Jack's question is that he was concerned that, you know, because schools are small, that there's, there's an. But I'm assuming that there's a way to convey information that's.
Yeah, it's totally anonymous. It's just the numerical data and then there's the comments, but we don't know really.
So the presentation that board though wasn't by school and it was not by school because we were told that there was concerns about anonymity, which seemed like that was a totally reasonable approach. But it sounds like it really was. I mean, you go back and listen to the tape, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. So it could just be, just a working system.
No, so I think, are you talking about the quantitative data or the qualitative data?
Oh.
Okay, so um, the board has access to all of the quality to feedback. And um, any, any data that's. That on the data, we, we have that real good schools have.
And I guess my last question would be on the, on the last page about um, complaints and uh, employee misconduct, since most of those uh, in the, even in the new G B K. Are a or on a 10-day cycle turnaround of the three that were not result, if those been result.
And would you wanna speak for that?
I mean.
All I, all I, I don't, I can only speak to vaguely, um, but my understanding is that, um. Due to the complexity of some of them, I don't know the difference between lines, but there are some that are. Still, I don't know, they're taking more than 10 days to turn around. Um. That's, that's all that I, I got.
Can you reframe that question? Because I want to make sure I'm.
Sure, just in the, and again, we, this was. We got this a while ago, I think. You all, I mean, before the last meeting, obviously on the last page, there's that spreadsheet and it just says three staff to staff are still in review. And based on the GBK AR policy, each step up to even the fourth step typically have a 10-day, 10-business-day cycle turnaround. So obviously it's been more than 10 business days. This was initially presented, but Natalie said that. These cases are complicated and don't haven't got resolved in today. What's a totally fine as long as the staff is informed. Hey, this is complex. It's gonna take more than 10 days. And so otherwise we're not following the policy.
I don't, I mean, I don't think we can respond to the status of a current complaint.
And I don't know the details of, you don't either. I just know that.
I'm not asking for any of that. I just want to know if this number is still three.
And I really, I don't feel like I can answer that setting. Um. Sarah, do you want to talk about the 10-day, 10-day, 10-day around the policy there? So. I just want to make sure that folks are hearing.
So I think I'll talk in general about a process because you could go into an A policy, you can go into a K policy, go into a G policy, but. I said, I'll give you big picture. Every step allows for something to come in, a process to happen. Within that 10-day period, some type of outcome will happen, a written decision, that conversation. And then if that isn't satisfied, satisfying the original complaint, then it starts to the next step. And then to the next step, and then to the next step, within each of those next steps is 10 days. But I'm hearing your concern is, um, and I appreciate that is making sure that if it extends past 10 days. Is the communication happening to the staff to let them clear that it's taking a little longer? Correct?
Right, just kind of look out for the staff. Yes, absolutely.
I don't know of anything that's extended ever beyond the 10-day.
And so I stepped two, so it takes step one, 10 days happen. Step two, if it doesn't. Occur until they buy. Then step, so that's five more days and that's 10. And then there could be five more days between step three. So it, it might not be a clean 10, 10, 10, 10, depending on if it's gonna progress up to different steps and when that, that happened.
I don't know if in the years that, or the last couple of years that we've had a complaint, anytime it's been outside of a. In our side 10-day window, it's Suzie or Martian.
No, that I know of.
That answers your question better.
That's hopefully, and again, I was just trying to update, but if there's any update in the policy or in the report that you gave us, if it was still three or not. I wasn't asking for specifics. I was just asking, is it now down to one, which would be fantastic, or is it six or whatever? But we can just take that as it is and.
Yeah, because I think we just get these quarterly.
What I can do is, uh, for the monitoring report.
With the HR.
HR.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah, quarterly. But what I will do for when it's reposted on November 14th, any resolution, I'll, it will be able to be reflected.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
But your biggest concern was the, as we were.
Just because we're compliant with our policies or policy governance or.
And we just.
That's not policy.
Ask, are we concerned that we're not? Or?
No, I just thought. Policy that we are.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want clarification. It seems like.
Any additional items on second implementation point two?
I can't be clear. So for the next, for the November 14th, any updates around these will update their thread line those. No specific data for this next meeting, but potentially at executive limitations. Uh, some data, but not yet. So I just want to make sure I have a good summary of that.
I don't think that, that we have the time.
Okay.
Tonight to figure out and give you the time to get an answer to unknown questions, what we need.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so now we're on to GLC DB.
So, um, I did not rewrite, we did not rewrite this policy. I just wanted to have the conversation first around. With. For three years that I've been in this role, we've had a parent who's, um, reached out multiple times, has presented at board meetings. And, um, I always just want to make sure that I'm keeping us on track and what feedback we're getting from the community. So this policy would essentially, if it were revised, would allow for a district employee who volunteers, volunteers to administer medicinal marijuana. To be able to do that during the school day under, um, under processes, procedures that would be, um. Appropriate for our school district. And so I just wanted to get the board's sense of, um, your thoughts or, or questions today. So I'm. If, uh. You all have any questions for anyone in the public? That would be great. Eric and I did meet with both nurses and they have. They don't see any objection on their side to this. I think the biggest question we have is. As, as things, as needs might happen more, what might impact might that be to the staff who volunteer? But you can't force anyone to do it. It purely has to be a voluntary status.
So when you say impact a staff to volunteer, you're talking about the time that you take it up because of volume?
Yeah.
And then time of day may not coincide with that volunteers' schedule. So you're looking at coverage, that type of thing.
Yeah, that would be probably the biggest logistic that comes up on our side. I don't know, Derek, if there's something else. Does it always need to be a school nurse?
No, no, so it really can be anyone. Like I could do it.
And how much are you hearing this request of this?
Uh, from, from one. Okay, that we could increase.
Yeah, so I'm glad that you provided the Pooter of School District's policy. I mean, I think it's very clear, very concise, well-worded. So not a whole lot of room.
And this is covered by state law as a, in the last year or two, I think this is covering that. So I think that's a, that's helpful. So it's from a federal level. It's not yet legal, I don't believe.
Doesn't jeopardize funding or any other assets from the federal.
And if it does, then we would, I think there's language in there that we would change. And so we'd be able to, because one thing is, uh, as far as going to the equity thing that we would, if, if one student's getting it and then another student. Uh, or parent, I guess, would request that, that we'd make sure that everybody that requests it gets it. So we're applying the rules equally.
Yeah, it would be like anyone, like an EpiPen, right? We can't, we wouldn't discriminate on a knee versus another.
Well, sort of that, because EpiPen is the school resource and medical marijuana is the parent providing it. So it'd be, you don't live in an EpiPen.
I'm just saying that we, we're not gonna, we're, applies to 100% of children, not just.
Right, 1%.
The other thing.
That's all the policy.
Yeah.
Why did you have to become a lawyer?
One thing I do want to point out, I think we, I leaned into Pooters because of the policy that says if federal. Moneys were ever questioned, then the, we may need to suspend this opportunity. And I think capaking policy is important.
I think in the past, you know, staff was a little reluctant too, and it's great that they're in work. And so.
So I don't, and I can't find it. I just had one question because it talks about having it be available. In case of emergency. And, and I'm not an expert on medical marijuana certainly, but I don't think there's any emergency indication for medical marijuana and the issue. My, my only concern is from a district standpoint is when you make things more accessible because of an emergency, which. Probably would be perceived because again, it takes an hour to, one to three hours is the onset of action is my understanding. That also then puts at risk because it's more available, if that makes sense. So if you, you want to make sure you store it securely so that the medical marijuana goes to the student that it's indicated. Because I hate to see the district get an issue or something might go missing or something like that because it's too accessible. So that would be. And again, I, I will find it before the end of the meeting, but I think it was on, I think it was on page two, but I can't find it right this minute. And so again, I, I'm not sure. And I'm, like I said, not an expert, but there's, there's an emergency for it. It's more of a, a chronic ongoing medications. And there certainly is some data that it can be helpful, uh, for some patients. So. So I'd be supportive. I would just make sure that the storage aspect, uh, is cleared away, uh, so that we know that's done well.
Yeah, that's the storage of all medications like that. And then the other thing I would add that, um, the.
I think, sorry, I started looking at point number five, Jack, that references storage location and. To make sure that the storage location does not, uh, in any way cause the way that minister.
Right. Because I think, again, I'm not the expert, but I think it's kind of a time dose. Is it every four hours or six hours or something like that?
Um, yes, but it's also used as a seizure rescue.
That's the only familiarity I have with it is seizure rescue for.
Um, Austin takes it, uh, for behavioral, the, uh, for self-harming behaviors. As you might have seen earlier in here, he's kind of started to growl a little bit. It was kind of starting to get agitated more probably from boredom, but. Austin will typically do that. And after he has administered his oil, um, usually within 10 minutes, it'll settle him down and he will be. Very attuned with what's going on and not yelling, smiling. And it makes a major difference in his day, whether he has it or not. And it also provides seizure control protection. As like right now, we're doing it, um. We do three doses a day, 9:30 in the morning, 1:30 in the afternoon. And then we do bedtime because it helps sleep at night. But then he also has a nasal spray. That is a rescue that can be used when he has a seizure, goes into status. Whereas right now he has, um, rectal diastat, which before you can even administer that. 911 needs to be called because it affects your respiratory, you could go into respiratory distress. Um. And since Austin transferred out of the elementary school up here to the middle school, he's kind of being bussed between. High school, comes over to Silk for class, he goes, gets bussed down to middle school. To have that rescue med more readily available. It's been in a locked box in his backpack on his person, just like some kids I think do carry their asthma inhalers. Um, and that's been, Austin's been up here three, going on four years now. And as far as having to. Medicine locked in a lockbox in his bookbag. I don't think it slipped into any of the wrong hands, whereas he has peril within. 24/7 of the time. Well, I don't think Austin's ever rolling around where another student's gonna be able to access.
Other thing I want to add to any, any child with a health plan, it's, is run through with our whole, our whole team in terms of. The response to, so any changes, um, that would be run through our help team, which would include. Our nurse, special education teachers, potentially and others.
And this is district doctor on board as well. But.
We have been checked with the, the, the doctor, but we do that in between this. Eric, do you mind?
Austin also has a red card that allows him to have medical marijuana. He has a prescription for the doctor on the dosing and. The amounts, what he takes. As far as everybody keeps kind of tossing around federal funding, I believe I've emailed you a letter, um, from Washington DC. From a family Douglas County, um, where basically breaking down that letter says they've got bigger fish to fry. Jeopardize your funding for this, uh, policy. So.
Thanks for being here to explain what, what you're, what you're working with.
But, uh, the bill that was passed in 21 though, because it, it, it used to be, you know, you could ask the school, hey, will you change the policy? And, and the school could be like, absolutely not. And that was the end of it. But a new bill has been passed in 21 where, you know, it's not really a choice. It's. You know, he should have access to his medication and some prescription, and it should be treated just as any other prescription drugs that are kept at school as well.
Any other questions? So with the, I will move, we'll move forward, putting a draft for first read for November 14th. And we'll check in with the district's doctor and I'll get some feedback there.
You, you offered up the, um, Pooter, Pooter School District's policy. I think it sounds like everybody was pretty okay with that.
Yeah.
We're gonna use that as within for your draft. And did you have any specific concerns with that policy yourself?
The only, the only policy or concern that I have is that you really need a. An art, um, an exhibit that basically says, all right, what is the form that we need to complete? For, in my opinion, like the, the release of responsibility for the volunteer. So we need to work on that.
To keep and have that pair with the policy as a reference. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, this is a good policy to look at. This is very comprehensive.
Thanks. Thanks, Melissa. I appreciate Melissa. She's been teaching me around this, this topic for several years. So thank you.
Thank you guys for your time and listening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, really.
Okay. Strict updates. Pick it off the picture for insights or do you want? Whatever, whatever you, I mean, I have a list of these when you want to. Um, so Sarah's gonna just kind of share some updates around K-12 insights around Let's Talk and. Let her take it over.
So we have been working with Let's Talk, which is a platform that allows for anonymous feedback to come in and then go to certain departments going. However, we want to design it. And it allows for voices to be heard from all. Um, and so this is a, a lengthy overview of the platform. You want to add anything to it? It, it would be populated on our website. It would be dropdown menus and then where the dropdown menu, it would be anonymous. And so then where the dropdown menus say we want to go to the transportation department. It would direct the concern to the transportation department. And then within an established amount of time, within. Less than 24 hours, the response would happen back to that person. So it could be a two-way exchange, but yet anonymous is essentially. The platform in a nutshell. We've looked at a couple of different, um, platforms. They just aren't as comprehensive for our goal of engaging staff. Engaging community, hearing concerns, um, and building trust. And that was our goal with this, this platform.
You want to add any? Um, it just seems like it's very user-friendly, um. Easy, easy access on the website. I, I, I'm not sure, but I also imagine there's some now. Um. It looks like super customizable, how you can build it out on the backend. If you wanted everything just to come to HR, or if you want to funnel it to those other departments, or if it gets funneled to the wrong department. Folks have the ability to, um, make sure that that question gets to the right person because it's not always going to be a concern or complaint. Sometimes they're just questioned. I don't know where to find a calendar, something like that. So. And it's lovely too, because it has a clock that ticks for you. So it can let you know where you're at as far as responding. And the reports are just so robust on, um. Showing you your data of the kinds of things that have come in, how quickly you responded.
What department is having more concerns or a school than us? Then us, the professional development team at K-12 Insight will support this throughout the way. And do training.
Um, the price proposal is on the back, the last page of that, that packet there. One of the things that we talked about is just piloting it through the spring semester, just to kind of get a sense of use, um, value. Return on our investment per se, is this the best way that we want to move forward? So Suzanne, I don't know if you want to speak to the financial part.
Um, no, and in this proposal, it does have also the, um, survey in there, which has already been budgeted. That's something we budgeted in the spring when we did, did our adopted budget. So some of this would be an increase for sure. Especially to this year. So.
It gives like this, the spring semester gives an understanding of, is it a viable tool for students, staff and parents? Like it might be you called the snow day too late, um, or call it sooner. That's really helpful feedback. And people can do it quickly.
But the net cost would be less than what's listed here because there's so many already budgeted for the survey.
Yeah, the net budget impact.
Yeah.
I didn't notice that either.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's a significance of that. Thank you. Because I read it differently as well. So.
And we're.
It's still a significant cost. It's not like it's.
It's still a significant cost. It's not like it's.
And we're not locked into a multi-year contract.
That's. This one right here, this one right here. It is a contract for two years, but they're willing to work with us. It finally came one year and then they gave us different pricing. Or if we only did one year to try it out, what would that pricing be for year two? And then for year two. What would that be? And then so they gave us multiple pricing. If we chose to only do year one. And nothing for year two, it would take it down to nineteen thousand five hundred. But then nothing for year two. There's, there's no guarantee. There's no prorated. There's no discounts for year two. We would be starting year two at a higher cost.
And the survey is directly connected to the contract. So that would go away as well, or is that just?
It would just be a new contract and bring up the year two.
Yeah. So when we first started with our engagement survey, it was all in Google Docs. Then we moved to Survey Monkey. We had, we hired somebody to add this together. What we would need to do for historical data is add the year one, year two, and then the backside of this twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And it sounds like their tech team helped make that happen, just so that longitudinally they're all together. Right, Sarah?
I guess my thought is piloting. It probably makes sense. I guess the. My my ultimate hope would be as a smaller district that should be quite nimble that we would need their resources for long, that we could. Learn from it, kind of take their best practices and then integrate them and be, have it be internal if if possible. Would would be my hope.
Yeah, I mean, I think our best hope is that it's not a resource that's needed because people know they can come and just talk to us or send an email or something. I I mean, I see people parking a lot very frequently saying this is working, this is not working. It does. Take another step for principals or the people who are responding, but.
Yeah, so so I have some questions. I, you know, not currently, but in a past job, use something like this. And so I see how perhaps. It becomes a forum for just complaints instead of also celebrations. And even if it's a small population. For some of our staff, if they're hearing consistent complaints, I think that's very discouraging considering. The good work that they're trying to do every day. I wonder what we're hoping to get from this and how clearly we've articulated that and how it aligns with our strategic plan. Certainly, we want to have equity of voice. We want to have consistent representation through multiple. Methods, manners to allow people to access how they want. And I know how we access everything apparently. But I just wish that I'd like to hear more about it. Some concerns. I don't know if that's speaking with Sarah, if that's her initiative, it's yours, but I I do have some concerns. And especially I am the former building principal. We'd not want to put one more thing on our principals that takes them to something electronic. Way from FaceTime with their students, families and staff.
I don't disagree with you at all. I think this isn't, if there are any concern that someone can't report. And or openly that this would be a method, but I don't think this is the necessarily their route. Our small school district that's grounded in relationships want to go, but we wanted to share that this is. This is one solution that some school districts use.
A twelve insight surveys, I don't have a problem with. They did, they're well researched, credible. But again, I've also experienced it passed again. So perhaps technical difficulties don't happen in apps anymore. But were often they're attributed to a party different than the actual complaints. That becomes the part of the data, considering we have a small district that data set then will be skewed and that's problematic. Even looking at CDE, I was looking at some data yesterday and they had both inaccuracy. So I I have some concerns. I'll just say that before moving forward. So I would not be able to support it at this time.
Thank you. And I'm so sorry I stepped out during the most important part of this conversation. So this would allow a. Anonymous online forum for discussion.
It's not for discussions. We're like, this is working or I have.
The discussion point, I was going to clarify, the discussion point would come back from the live person on the other end can respond. And and it could go back, but not. But maybe that wouldn't be the intent sometimes.
I have some experience with this. Carter College did this under the two presidents ago and he he. I mean, the guy was a glut for punishment, like, and he made it anonymous and he just made a framework up to say we're asking this to be civil and respectful. And that was just, you know, that was, that was the overall for please be civil and respectful. And I mean, I'm really, I don't, I don't actually have a strong as opinion. I'm not sure. It was really interesting. It was a little more entertainment, honestly, because like then anyone could see, is that right? Like you can kind of watch the running note. This just goes to the drug.
Yeah, directors.
But it's not, but.
Yes.
So nervous about anonymity, but I understand that there's a, there's also real value to that.
Because I do, I think of like next door and all those things and that's not even anonymous, but it's pretty negative or.
I just don't think, no, hardly. And this is one more thing to check.
Yeah, this and oh, yeah, and that's the thing I have to check it. This so this the problem we're solving towards. Is a discomfort coming forward to say I'm I'm upset with you. And I anonymously tell you I'm upset with you.
Good. Nice to be able to pass that and it'd be much cheaper. Just as you point.
And you like this?
I'm going to stay neutral. Presenting what you've been tasked with.
And and part of that is to to really submit the conversations we've had around. If an individual may not feel comfortable. And I just, that's why we want, we wanted to bring it to the board that this is an option. If you all, as you're thinking about continuous growth. I I do believe this adds one more thing to administrators. I do believe that it can actually not, not. Create more productive relationships, but it also. It for a short matter of time, can it provide some feedback? So I don't know. I'd love to hear from principals because.
Yeah.
They're going to receive their majority and me most likely.
I would hope that to create a culture where people would feel comfortable coming to me directly. And that's what we're all working towards so that we can solve. Problems relationally and face to face.
Yes.
I know that's not always possible. That's why we're exploring this, but that would be my best hope.
Be great.
I I just want to say I would agree with that. I think that one of my words that somebody addressed was that we're like. We're precluding the natural ability for somebody to come and talk to me. If I'm, if we're creating this forum. Then it's it's odd, like I'm, it's kind of, I would be responding to somebody I don't know about, maybe not even specifics. Because I'm thinking about like the safety tells I've been getting lately have been really vague. And so I can't even respond adequately to those. So if somebody made a big comment that. I didn't do something wrong. I don't know the context. I don't know when this happened. I don't know how it happened. I know how to fix it, right? I can go to all the staff and say. Hey, I made this, like somebody reported that I made this mistake and I'd like to fix it, but I don't have enough details to fix it. So for me, it feels like. It could have resulted in a period.
Not a fan. I was a fan of like the open forum thing because they're actually open participation. Really, it did end up being relatively. I mean, seeing it for five years in action. It was relatively equitable in the feedback that was heard because people did recognize their comments were being read by everyone. It doesn't. Bear in mind that I don't like giving avenues for anonymous kindness. Sorry, go ahead. Yeah, did I?
As Maria was saying, basically, if you're trying to be anonymous, you can't include any details.
I know.
So it probably doesn't.
It is, I would say, there's so little good that comes anonymously. No one ever sends me flowers anonymously.
And and to Maria and Dustin's point, it all goes back to the relationship. Should be got a trusting relationship with your staff or parents or whoever it is. And there probably isn't that, you know, concern about, you know, being anonymous because you have a relationship. So I think it it all comes back to to trust. So that would be the goal would be exactly your point. Somebody's got a concern, they come to you and say, hey, Mr. Katie X Y G or a compliment.
I was just going to say too, I, our kids are watching. And and I I just don't know what we're teaching our students. We're teaching our students that the adults around them. Can't can't do this. And and whether that's leadership is not listening in the way that is best serving staff or. That staff is is struggling with communicating with with leadership or a mixture of all of those pieces. I I just don't know what we as the adults are modeling for the students in our care or healthy communication and relationships.
That was actually what I was thinking. I like, one of the hardest things to teach your child, right? It's like you got your feelings hurt or this went wrong. Like how let's practice. How are we going to go talk to this person? So I don't know if I'm not looking at it holistically though, but.
I think I wanted to give you an idea of what. A district, districts in the area, districts nationally do when I think. The core values of relationships, equality and opportunity aren't at the heart. So I'm happy to hear that this is not a direction potentially. That the board maybe wants to support. I do believe that dialogue, conversation, meeting people across the table. And very often people are very honest. So it's what's working, not working. And we see really good outcomes from from that, but. From, I just wanted to make sure that we are also being responsive because there were some, some statements in the paper around fear of. Alliation for coming forward. So I do think we, I still want us to explore because I don't know what that means. And to Maria's point. That vague statement is very, very big and it's extremely hurtful to our employees. So. I think we still need to figure out some ways for that to happen. But I don't believe necessarily this is the solution for that. So I don't know.
Thank you for looking into it.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
No, and if, and if we do, you know, whatever, if we do, maybe need to reintroduce this conversation again at a later time.
Can I say something? Since I'm not a principal, but when I was at the police department, we had a thing called the water cooler. So that's where people could. Put their rights, but it was again, our complaints or potential issues, but it was anonymous thing. And it did not work well for us at all.
Was it public or was it?
Anonymous kind of email thing to whoever.
The one person, okay.
Yeah, it didn't, it ended up assigning a full-time person just to sort through all the stuff. So thank you. That's my experience with that kind of thing.
Thank you, Sarah and Marcia for.
Yeah, I think by defining what we don't want, we help and are under the values and what we do want. I heard those more face to face, more offensive, more trust. And then how do we build those avenues? To get to that communication more open and honest and transparent.
I'd also add to, there are folks who are extremely trusting of our, of our school district and a lot of different aspects. And I think. That voice, that voice matters too. So how do we make sure that that voice enters the table to your point, Tina? And thanks for trying to come up.
Yeah, thank you.
To a problem that, you know, is going to take a minute.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Can I circle back with a question regarding the. One time I think what to call it, the JL CD.
Yeah, I'll say that right. JL CD.
CD, I forgot one, yeah. The timing of that, would we, because you did put so much time on the front end of putting together something that sounds like we generally like. Would we be able to look at that and vote on it by the next?
Board meeting? It's on this one, you typically want to, well, it's actually, it's an existing policy, so it could be approved in a first reading. Because it's not like a new policy, it's in addition to a current policy. Is that what you're asking?
I am.
Try to expedite it.
Yeah, and I don't want to over, I don't want to. Overreact to a need of a parent, but I I happen to know the amount of time that is spent driving. Just to be able to do something that we had, we do currently have a volunteer willing to do.
I I I've heard that people would be willing to.
Okay.
Now, this because there is already an existing policy. It's basically an addition. It's not a new, you could, the board could approve it on a first read as a revision to.
I don't want to rush anything, but I recognize I've been in healthcare not as long as you, but that we are okay societally around. Pharmaceutical and we're, we are much slower on the THC thing, but if this was a policy that was, everyone was feeling good on, I would. I would love to review it sooner than later.
The only time constraint is you said there's another corresponding document that we need.
Yeah.
Or as far as other, so is that an appropriate timeframe to do that then?
I think, I think it's enough for us to do. And then speaking with the, our medical doctor, I'll do, how about this? Work really hard to get it in time of.
If that were, yeah, if that doesn't feel inappropriate. I reckon it's really like only have one parent, but this is a really extreme case and it's. Some quality of life.
Thank you. We'll work hard for that if everyone else is. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for all the work you did on the front end.
I'm looking at this, this form that I've scheduled. That's kind of what I was showing up there. I have a copy of it if you want.
Over here, I like it. Not, it's unlike the rest of my day. I like it too. Well, I think here is the loud part.
So much for relationships.
Any questions about the recalc or anything there? Christina Baker was able to pull some of the historical data. I think it is interesting to look at, you pass on elementary schools increased enrollment. Into elementary school declined slightly and then. Mini two springs middle school has stayed pretty consistent with a little bit of increase this year and then. Into Springs High School with a decline. So just so you all know, we're already actively working on our. Communications for for enrollment. We met with Christina Baker. Colleen and Eric. The window will open January seventh. And because of the new OCR process and the, the rulings.
They're decided yet. Nothing has been decided.
Or the July one.
Right, but there's with the OCR complaint.
With the OCR.
Yeah, so everybody's kind of just waiting still.
Yes. So with the ruling in July one, we still have to follow our, our changed policies and practices, but. We're already seeing, we're already seeing interest in our school district that cats receiving interest in folks. I think Jackie has people wanting to register already for next year. So. Confident that this will continue to to increase. One of the things I said, we're working on data analysis regarding choice enrollment. Specifically what I'm, I'm curious about looking at is when students come to the school district. And if they decide to leave, at what point might they leave? And so we're perceiving some interesting. Just looking at the raw data. So we're going to start to do some pivot tables and charts around those data. So I think that will be important, especially.
Sorry, but you're talking about when they leave, like throughout a school year or at what grades they're transitioning out?
They start in preschool.
Right. So when are we seeing them transition out? And I know we've talked in past years that that was hard. We were struggling, maybe not struggling, but. Somebody was in a very unofficial way tracking where they were all showing up. What's the process for that? Do we have a better process that internally now? Are we still relying on an external?
No, so their exit codes say, you know, they're going to this school, they're going to homeschool. So that's the data that we're going to run. I would say just looking at it closely, like not just looking at it, the raw data, probably like a third. Maybe leaving the state, a third maybe moving within the county and a third maybe moving within the state of Colorado or homeschool. So we'll be, we'll be analyzing that. I think it'll be very interesting. I do want to share like choice out. Students who are forcing out or leaving the school district. Colleen, make sure I get that term right. So they started, let's say they started, at some point they were in our school district last year. They don't. Uh, appear in our, in our school this year. In eighteen, nineteen, that was two and twelve. Nineteen twenty, that was three hundred and eight. Twenty twenty-one, we know that was a lot of transition there. That was three hundred and thirty-nine. And this year we're back down to pre-COVID. So that's to one hundred and ninety-eight. So. I think that's a, that's the right trend that you want to see. That fewer students from the previous year have left. I think Natalie presented some interesting statistics around the number of school-aged children in households in the two. That we just really need to pay attention to.
And I mean, it's statewide as well. Well, and just the economic impact of the cost of living was to buy twenty-five is significant.
So our, our best, our best hope is to have that sort of data analysis. And hopefully in the next work session, so that we can have that log around it. Setting targets to. Next topic is community engagement. So next week Natalie and I are meeting with, and Eric with the Colorado Education Initiative. Love to just know if there's some engagement strategies you all are. Love to just know if there's some engagement strategies you all are, engagement processes the board is interested in. Natalie will be in that, that conversation, but really just making sure that we're reaching all, all state political groups.
Yeah, and when do you think, well, we'll find out, I guess.
So we'll let you know. Next thing, spring calendar. It came at the end of last year that there were just some feedback from the adopted calendar for this year that we weren't able to change. But I did meet with elementary teachers, but that you passed them into elementary school yesterday. Because some of the feedback was that where the spring, where the spring conferences land in February, that it may be beneficial to have one later in the year, just to like, like close the conversation or where their child is at that point and what might be helpful for the summer. So we met yesterday with some structures, I would say my next step is to meet with Maria and Jackie around the feedback. So the dialogue was good, Jackie and Maria, I don't know if you want to share a little bit of context. What that means is that if it moves forward, I would potentially make a recommendation to the board that in April or May, there would be one day for parent teacher conferences or end of year closeout meetings for elementary only and that we would do a reflection at the end of the year. So I'd love to, Maria or Jackie to share.
I, from our school, one of the things that we had discussed was that the time from February to the end of the year is a long stretch. And so some of those, you know, which we might not read plans or our NIPs or needing some intervention support services that we didn't have a touch point with them. Like the last touch point would have been in February. And it's usually around the end of April, beginning of May that we're initiating our summer programming. And we really feel like we don't have a period at the end of the year or something to kind of pull it together and say, gosh, your kid has made a lot of progress, here's some things that you could do. A lot of those conversations are ongoing throughout the year to really give quality feedback in tiny, it might get really dope, like we're missing. Especially for elementary kids coming off a couple of years of COVID, we're missing that connection with some of our families. So we thought that would be one way to facilitate, not for every single solitary student, probably students who are really new to that. For, for summer.
Sure, and we talked a lot about value added being all the things that Maria said. And then you have to look at the opposite side of that, which is end of the year craziness, right? All the field trips, exciting things that are happening. So my concern with that is just the work that goes into conferences and, and those intentional conversations and putting one more thing on a teacher's plate right after CMAAS, right as you're wrapping up the year. I see so much value in the conversations with families, preparing students for the summer, but just making sure that we're giving teachers adequate time. If this is something that moves forward to really have meaningful conversations, wrapping up replans, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so to echo that, so they went, we went through an exercise of what is a value add and what may be some unintended outcomes of this. And of course, it came up one day of instructional time impact to the staff. So I'll meet with them and if we decide to, if I decide to kind of recommend to all, make sure that we can do that before December either way. So it's fair to our parents and it's also honoring to our staff.
Yeah, then we certainly want to hear what's elementary teachers and principals, you know, what you think, because you guys are the experts.
Dialogue really helpful conversation. The last thing I have is just provided here, who can be in personnel meetings? And I, my summary statement right there is that it's important dialogue. And Sarah and I met today just in terms of pulling some different, different resources. We believe working with employers councils will be very important through that process.
Let's add to the policy clarification that we did last time at the board meeting.
Well, it's, it's the extension, right, the, the next step. Policy clarification is done.
Yeah, so, but this is, this is regarding that.
No, different, yes.
No, different?
Um, but.
Okay, so that, okay. Is it, it's not that policy, it's totally, because that one was about who can join, no, totally different, okay?
That was around who can assist in supporting someone through the process.
Got it, and this one is?
That's my quote, that's, I think we would like some clarity on, on that specifically, so.
So I, I feel like with the, the policy clarification that we made last meeting, I guess last month, that that was something that was confusing to people when they were reading it. The interpretation was yes, it was just, so we, we corrected something that was confusing. Now we're not trying to correct something that's confusing, we're trying to change language.
Yes.
This, that one, uh, let's see. GBKA dash R, and it reads the complaint may choose a person to assist system. That means like, hey Patty, how, how can I submit? That doesn't mean someone's sitting in the process, so it's two different, two different topics.
Okay, yeah, just sorry.
There was ambiguity, the way it was previously written, because it said employee as opposed to complaint.
Yes, I was very, I was very clear on the ambiguity. I'm very ambiguous of what we're speaking about. This is a different, different policy, but you're, okay. I will wait till you bring it to them, then I will.
Then we're looking for when a staff member has an issue with administration or vice versa. Who can, who can be on the meeting if they feel as though they need an advocate?
Yeah.
As part of our, you know, trauma-based care district that we're striving to be.
Got it, thank you.
I think.
Find over here. Okay, thank you for looking into it.
No, I, well, I think the trick is, is that again, I would say similar to our conversations around the monitoring reports. If we do want to really dive into this, I think it is going to take a minute.
I agree.
And so, so I know Gus sent us a couple of things today via email. And I think he, that this was, this was from D eleven, but it's from the master agreement between the Colorado Springs Educational Association and the Board of Education and the School District eleven. So it's not a policy and it's part of a hundred and twenty-seven page set of agreements that were created between the Teachers Association and the Board of Ed. So, so that's what we have from Gus to start the conversation. You know, for me on a basic level, I think we would want to hear from the HR department and how that impacts day-to-day operations. I wouldn't mind reaching out to someone from the D eleven board and talking to them about how this document was created and, and how it's working in our district.
That's a very big document and there's a lot of labor law and employment law that goes into a working agreement versus a collaborative decision-making team. So we, we may like some of the language, but it's a much bigger context. So I think it's a much bigger discussion, start talking about that. It has a lot to do with how we do business.
Right, right, if we are going to be, I mean, an association, and what does that look like?
Right.
As a district. And then, and then if we don't want to go that route, then how do we again incorporate some of this language? Is there, there's always A, B, C, D, E. I think you had mentioned something like there could be options in our policies.
Yeah.
If they're more like.
That's right.
I don't know.
Like guidance.
Guidance and stuff, yeah, and some things like that, which, because that's less formal, maybe that's more of an opportunity for us to move faster and also, you know, I don't know. So I think there's, so, you know, I would, and I also, we also haven't heard obviously from our, from John Stanek, from our lawyer as well around this. So I think there's, there's a lot of information that we would need to gather.
Absolutely.
I think we would feel informed enough.
I think, yeah, and I think we need to decide how it fits into scope of our work. What they fight, do we want, once a guidance document, do we, because it is, they're going to a policy? Or do we want to explore a sixty-page document significantly? Structure.
Well, and the other thing that.
Um.
Very sure.
Karen shared with us, one of the documents she shared with us was from D twenty, and it was a shared decision-making kind of guide. And it was pretty interesting, I thought, in terms of where we are, right? Like, is there input from all state political groups? You know, how was the information gathered and what groups were represented? Who needs to know about this? What is the impact on others in the district, schools and other departments? You know, how will this impact the community? Like, there's just some questions that I think can help us, guide us through this conversation. And I don't know, I just thought it was surprisingly helpful for me today. And I was looking at what we might need in order to move forward. I'm like, oh, and apparently we're not the first people to have tackled the complex situation before.
I think that's great, so that's exactly right. I think there's a lot that gets brought before us, certainly more this last year than probably in prior years. And I think we're going to stay focused on students and student outcomes and maintaining quality staff. And so we need to make some decisions about what, what we take on and what we say, you know, thank you to.
And there is that whole section here, this in the best interest of the student, how will this benefit the students? How will this lead to incorrect, increased student achievement, so.
All, all my favorite thing, all day, every day.
I think I, for us, I think we need some direction because this is a lot of big things, like big questions I have is, is the board interested in pursuing a negotiated master agreement? That is a big question. And are we going to be looking, do you want us to look at school districts? Because district does operate under the master agreement. If you want us to look at that direction, that's very different than looking at other school districts that don't have a negotiated master agreement. So that's where I think we need some support from what, what would be appropriate. I think that a, a great opportunity is the HR advisory committee that has started. And so, because there are a lot of different outcomes here that could happen. That I just think everybody in the whole, whole community really needs to be aware of.
I think I would agree with that. I think we can look toward their school districts, but we need to know what we want as a community here from our staff and administrators, particularly our staff, about what their needs are first, before we make blanket decisions. Because this will impact them most significantly.
And I think one of the questions Sarah and I had today, like what data is, are we using to make this decision? Because we, you know, look at the percent of, number of complaints over these years that we've actually been tracking. And the number of employees, the number of days, the number of interactions that we have. I just, I think the data that we're looking at to make these decisions is very important. So if there's some that would be helpful, maybe that's something this council can, can be looking at. I don't know if anybody else, you're calling, so do you?
I just had a question, is that, is that a hundred and twenty-seven page document available on their website? Or is that something that you have to know somebody to get?
No, it's only one.
I'm just curious where it came from and if it's open, if it's open regardless on their website or if it's not, that was my question.
I must, it almost goes back to the discussion we had about K twelve earlier, just communication relationships. And we want staff to feel safe and, and that involves trusting relationships. And I think to your point about what we're teaching our children, I think that's probably the most important thing that could come out of this meeting is the importance of trusting relationships.
Yeah. So that's the question, like, right, trusting relationships and what are that, what, what does that look like? And govern, like a guidance document or, but there are each of these situations, you think about staff to staff, students to staff, staff to student. All of those have a lot of different complexities and there is federal and state law that we have to follow. So I think, thank you for saying to go, we'll go in slow, getting, getting facts. I'm not saying snail's pace, I just think very intentional, engaging people, it's a big deal.
Um, and I think part, maybe the, the starting point is like, what are our options? Like, because like, yeah, you know, because, because again, it's, if it's mostly as simple as guidance.
Yeah, a guiding, a guiding document versus a policy versus a master negotiated agreement.
Right.
We don't need a net master negotiate agreement.
That was not the intention when we started this conversation, but I was up for the conversation, but that was not the intent. I don't believe that was, that was, I just wanted to introduce where these documents came from so that we were aware.
Oh, I appreciate that.
It was not a policy and that it was part of a larger document, so it's good.
I mean, I would love to know if, I mean, this, D eleven's the second, or third largest school district in the state.
Oh, not even close.
It gets to the. If that has a county, you know, okay. Just looking for some analogous.
So we have some staff here, I think you can even chime in if you want to.
Would be great. A broad spectrum of staff members that have diverse opinions, since that's one of our basic guiding things, is to value diverse opinions. And we would love to get their feedback to this, this policy not for us, or at least it's turning out for me, this policy is for them. We want them to be comfortable with policy, I think that's, I mean, that's the message that you can take to the staff and the board is we want them to be comfortable bringing forward their concerns, you know, whatever that way is, that we may be able to help support them, that's the goal.
We, we would encourage folks to participate in that advisory council. It's, it's, it's a nice variety of different roles and of buildings and departments. It's been some very robust conversation at our first meeting on Tuesday. Thank you, so next steps for us is?
What? Keep it simple.
So we'll see what this happens. What does this have want to feel comfortable bringing forth issues in their district?
Yeah, so that, we'll start with advisory council kind of unpacking that. There are definitely things that are already created, that guidance can be a starting place potentially, so thank you for that.
That can be a great project for people getting trained in the trauma-informed care.
I just know initially, I think initially when we chatted, it felt like we could maybe quickly, it wasn't like a big of a shift. And now we're on the same page in terms of the fact that it might take a little time to do it the right way, are we okay with that?
Or it might not be depending what. We, we really want to hear from them. I mean, it's, again, it's their policy, it's not our policy, we're just trying to be open.
And I, oh, us from our perspective, we all, we also we also do and value relationships and open dialogue and meeting with staff. So I, I hope that we see this as a policy governance team in supporting. So that's how we work together with our staff in partnership with boards of education, that's our whole. And there's staff, people. Thank you, thanks for that.
And then I'm glad to hear that the HR committee has met, which is exciting. So, and you know, so we talked about DAC, there was the list of names with that one at the last meeting. And I think one of the questions that came up was like, are we currently in compliance with our policy and state policy for DAC? And then I think the other piece is that, you know, again, as someone who's been in DAC, and I swear, I think I've been in DAC for like fourteen years. So long, but, but I feel like DAC is working better than it ever has. But it sounds like maybe there were some requests for like increased parental involvement in it or things like that. So that maybe, I know this year, everybody's working well and they have their teams. And I don't think we want to disrupt the current works, but maybe next year we might want to see if we can.
I haven't heard that, can you give me some more context there?
I'll give you real brief context, just because we have a lot of people here that look like they probably want to talk, so we can maybe do our next meeting. But in the policy BDF, which, which defines how, how the advisory committees are done, there's a link to a state statute twenty-two, eleven, three oh one that defines, you know, kind of members of the DAC and, and those sort of guidelines and that sort of thing. It looks like from our DAC and we appreciate, the board appreciates work that DAC does because they're, they're essentially a subcommittee of the board. And we love the fact that there's lots of staff on it, but we, it'd be awesome if there were more parents on it. And so.
So Kate, I think that's a bigger discussion of like, what's an ideal number? I can tell you that there are parents that I have expressed interest in it and then when I reach out, they're like, I don't want to participate. So I think it is important to know, like it is, it is a commitment, it is commitments, we're a working group. And I think, I just, I think it's a big, bigger dialogue. And whatever the board wants, of course, we'll recognize, but.
Clarify, if you've got a closed enrollment, it's an open enrollment. It's, it's like at the beginning of the year, everybody signs up, run the year, and then you sign up again next year, right?
It's typically a three-year commitment, but we have parents who are staff who say, I can only do this one year ideally, so that there's continuity. But this structure has been in place for three years. So it's, I'm hearing that there's any concerns or questions about it.
I don't think it's concerns, I think it's just that, I think we can make it better.
And what would, so more parents?
More, more, I'm a community engagement, which is a big deal. I mean, the, the people that are probably most invested in a child or a student's education is going to be their parents. So having more parental involvement, then again, in the guidelines that talks about, you know, at least three parents of students enrolled in district on every district accountability committee, that's a state thing, that's not my thing, that's what the link is from our policy PDF.
So we have one committee and we have more than.
It looks like we have five, five parents, based on the list that you sent me. I could be wrong, and I don't want to belabor the discussion, but maybe we, we can just follow up and just make sure that we're, so I thought we had three committees looking at three questions.
But the overall DAC is the.
So that was going to be my next question, just for clarification. So we have that, but we also have subcommittees and those subcommittees may have additional people on those subcommittees who are not DAC members. That was gonna be my next question, just for clarification, so we have that, but we also have subcommittees, and those subcommittees may have additional people on those subcommittees who are not DAC members? No, okay.
Those, there's the DAC, the overarching DAC.
Subcommittees are.
Yes, so the DAC is the big overarching, and they all contribute in some, like, whether maybe standing committees. Uh, there, there's an interplay, and Natalie can speak to what that looks like. I would also invite any board member to. Attend the DAC meeting, I can tell you, we have way more DAC members than other school districts that I know, so. I, I think it's a fantastic working group, I haven't heard, so thank you for the feedback, but.
It's getting fashionable, that'd be great. Are more parents involved, that'd be great. It looks like it's, it's nineteen staff, and we love staff involvement. But if we wanna get a broader perspective, cause the DAC, I mean, looking through our, our district action plan, as well as. Some of the end statements and stuff we're gonna be discussing later on, the DAC has a lot of heavy lifting going on, whether it's staff evaluation. Whether it's staff retention, whether it's, you know, our capital things, I mean, those are heavy involved things, and the parents. It might be beneficial to have more parental involvement, if, if people volunteer, obviously they're not getting paid to come, but at least certainly making that open. Uh, to parents of children in the district. Would be great, and just make sure that we're following the rules that are set out by the state, so that's all.
Yes, I wanna just, since folks are here, and that, this is all posted on the district's website under the DAC, and so. Just looking at the number of parents.
I know, see what you want to say.
I just wanna say, I came from a school district of eight thousand students, and our DAC is. Maybe larger than that one with a similar makeup, so I do think we have pretty good involvement overall across the board, especially for a small school district.
I think for my first ten years on DAC, there were about eight of us, so, and we met four times a year. Um, so yeah, so I'm really impressed with where we are, but I think it's exciting that the board's interested in the DAC's work, cause we recognize what they're doing for us, so I think it's. Fantastic that we're kind of tracking to this degree, and I, I think it's, it's great that. We're having this conversation.
Yeah, I just counted, so eleven. What's beautiful about our school, small school district is our, our parents are also some of our staff. And so they come, while they might have a hat of a parent, they may also have a hat as a staff member, so that makes this really unique, so eleven of these. Like, have different, different roles, different hats. And so I'm, we always hope, open to learning more about what the specific feedback, but, but in my opinion, the DAC has done some really great work. Reading salary adjustments based on salaries that were negotiated. Changes in professional development a lot, so, but always opportunities for us.
Sure, yeah, maybe, again, just maybe look at twenty-two eleven three oh one, and just give us a little feedback at the next meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, I think we are finally. Okay.